Good morning. We have called the Crawford County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for December fourteenth. Let's start with the pledge of the Commissioner, Wiederspin.
All right.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need approval minutes from the full session meeting on November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
And approval minutes for the work session on December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. And approval of payment of bills amount of two million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents for the period ending December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
There were three executive sessions, November twenty-ninth for the courts, December second for human services, and December eighth for the planning office. Any public comment? Thank goodness there's not much room for you. Juvenile probation.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning Holly.
Morning Holly.
I'm here to ratify the request and purchase of a two thousand and twenty-two Ford Explorer four-wheel-drive XLT SUV for thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, and that will replace our two thousand and nine Dodge Caravan within our vehicle.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Thank you for your patience. We appreciate this.
Thank you for my Christmas present.
You're welcome.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
The clerk of courts. We'll wait and see who comes next. IT.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning Tim.
IT is here to approve the purchase of the annual Park Place Technologies Hardware Support for sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Thank you Tim. Crawford County Treasurer.
Good morning.
Good morning Christine.
I'm asking, I'm here asking for your approval for payment of the two thousand and twenty-two actuarial determined contribution to the retirement account. This year the payment is two million, fifteen thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff Powers.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning Dave.
I'm here to approve an invoice for Verizon Informational Services to install proprietary programming in a new observation computer. The cost is twelve hundred dollars.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you Dave.
Thank you.
Conservation District.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning Christine.
Two items today. The first, on behalf of the Crawford County Agland Preservation Board, to approve the reappointment of Scott Preston, Richard Rendulik, and Dennis Heinrich to the board. Their terms to begin January first, two thousand and twenty-three, and continue through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Second item is to approve the reappointment for Robert Waddell as a Rural Director to the Crawford County Conservation District Board. His term will be a four-year term. This one beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-three, and continuing through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Public safety, I'm going to handle Greg. He's in the regional meeting today. Thirteen A is to approve the annual maintenance agreement for snowmobile lawn care at M and M Lawn Care at a cost of seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. These expenses share between DPS and the Coroner's Office, respective budgets. This is a budget item.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thirteen B is to approve the annual renewal of a Variado software license for the CAD system at a cost of five hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is a budget item.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Procurement. Mr. Peaster.
Gentlemen.
Morning.
This is for your action to renew an annual service agreement with Linstar for maintenance of equipment that enables access control at the courthouse. Agreement provides support for the specialized printer that produces photo ID access cards for the courthouse as well as for human services and the care center. And also, components of the access control system are covered, including controllers, card readers, client service software that regulates entry at the side doors of the courthouse. Renewals for the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year. Agreement includes telephone support, repair parts, labor, travel, and preventive maintenance. Total cost is three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and maybe four cents.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion?
What was the amount on that mark?
Three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and maybe four cents.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Yes, Saug. This is for your approval action on a rental agreement for industrially laundered textile products at various county facilities. Consisting of floor mats for the courthouse, judicial center, parole annex, domestic relations section, juvenile probation, public safety building care center, and District Court Thirty-three oh six. This also includes laundered dust mops and janitorial towels for the courthouse and judicial center. Facilities have had three different vendors under individual contracts that have expired or are up for renewal to consolidate effectively under a single supplier. Request for quotes process was conducted. The lowest and most favorable response was from Cintas. Agreement is for thirty-six months. Unit pricing, terms, and conditions are based on a publicly solicited contract that was awarded to Cintas under the Omni Partners National Cooperative Purchasing Program, which is open to schools and local and state governments. Crawford County is a member of Omni Partners. Based on the current level of service at the county facilities, the projected money aggregate, aggregate cost benchmarks around eight thousand amounts. This amount of agreement would be below existing expense will enable an overall savings. And having a single supplier will consolidate contract administration and improve customer service.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Probably with a second. Any discussion?
As always, thank you for your detailed one.
Absolutely.
I mean, and that's just an example of floor mats. Like, it's one, one good, they look good. So we appreciate that, Mark. Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. The care center. Thank you, Mark.
Request to create five additional per diem activity aid positions.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Request to change business office coordinator position from an hourly position to an exempt position.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Request to approve the contract with Slippery Rock University of Pennsylvania. This is to provide an internship site, offering facility resources and supervision to a student.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
And request to approve the amendment to the UPMC HP ancillary provider participation agreement to implement a UPMC Community Health Choices Snap Value-Based Program to arrange for and cover certain healthcare services for M and M Oral Participates.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
The correctional facility.
Good morning Commissioners.
Alright, Ben.
Here for a couple of different things today. First is to ratify the purchase of four computers to replace four non-reparable desktop units. Purchase to be done through the county IT from Dell Computers. Total needing to ratify is three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ten cents.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Next one is to approve the one-year maintenance agreement with Central Square Tri-Tech Technologies. This maintenance agreement will cover the final year for the jail management system contract. Cost of the maintenance agreement is twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. This is to be funded through the commissary fund.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Third is to ratify the purchase of materials needed to repair two pod doors. Purchase to be from LWE Incorporated from Mevo PA. The total cost of materials is nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is a budgeted item.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
And the last one at least is to ratify the purchase of one med craft and may toilet. The cost of the toilet is one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars, forty-six cents. This is not a budgeted item.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
The courts.
Good morning.
Good morning, Henry.
We're seeking first to ratify a one-year contract for security service at the MDJ Linesville Office with Core Security of Crawford County LLC at a cost of twenty-six dollars and thirty-five cents an hour, beginning December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion?
Did you move? Is that fifth the correct? We changed.
Should have been. Originally, it was going to be the first, but by the time we got everything worked out, it was the fifth.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
We're also seeking approval for a contract with BNA Cleaning Services for cleaning services at the MDJ Titusville Office, beginning January first of two thousand and twenty-three, at a cost of a hundred and twenty dollars per clean. That's one to leave.
So move.
Second.
Probably with a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
We're seeking approval of six hundred dollars for two two thousand and twenty-three memberships to the National Court Reporters Association.
So move.
Second.
Probably with a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
We're also seeking approval of a five-year contract with Thompson Reuters for Westlaw access for county individual passwords at three thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars a month.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeking approval of a five-year contract with Thompson Reuters for patron access in the law library at a cost of eight hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents a month.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
We're seeking to extend a temporary per diem position in the MDJ Mevo Office until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
And lastly, we're seeking to change a position title from juvenile master to court hearing officer.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Crawford County Planning.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning Zach.
First item, we're asking for approval of payment for application for payment number two from Francis J. Palo Inc. in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety cents for the Brady Tunnel project. This is paid for out of our A R C Power Grant.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
We're also asking for approval to pay application for the Pennsylvania Environmental Council in the amount of seventy-three thousand, twelve dollars and twenty-three cents for their administrative services from October two thousand and twenty through June of two thousand and twenty-two for the A R C Power Grant, and this is also paid for out of that grant fund.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
We're seeking approval for a pay invoice number one to Crawford County Federated Library Systems in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars for fiber installation and services costs to two of the libraries. This is paid for out of the parkland funds.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
We're asking for a partial payment, approval for pay application number one from North Rock Construction in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, forty, four hundred and forty-four dollars and one cent. This is for the Rocky Glen Road culvert replacement. It's paid for out of fiscal year two thousand and twenty C D B G funds.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion?
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Next is pay app, the remainder of the pay application number one for North Rock Construction in the amount of sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars, again for the Rocky Glen Road culvert replacement. This is paid for out of fiscal years two thousand and twenty-one C D B G.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
We're asking for approval of payment for invoice number six, seven, three for five thousand, five hundred dollars for the Northwest Commission, which is ten percent of the in-count match for the Ernst Trail Crossing Study. This is a reimbursement out of the county's Twenty Twenty-One Act thirteen environmental initiatives grant.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
And finally, we're asking for approval of payment of pay application number three to Francis J. Palo Construction in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and thirty-six cents for the Brady Tunnel project. Again, this is paid for out of the A R C Power Grant.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Thank you, Zach. County maintenance.
Morning.
Morning, Mark.
Asking approval to pay single-decker welding to replace the deck on bridge number eleven on White Moon Road for eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents to be paid for with liquid fuels money.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Approval to pay invoice from the Eads Group for Crawford County Bridge number fourteen, White Moon Road. This is part one, engineering services for two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. This will also be paid for with liquid fuels money.
So move.
Second.
Probably with a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Asking to ratify approval to pay single-decker welding to rehab bridge number twenty-six, Blinden Road, for one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and ten cents. This will be paid for with Act forty-four money.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Approval to pay Laurel Management Company. This is to calibrate a water meter at the Quality Living Center Facility for one thousand, forty-five dollars.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Approval to, asking approval to pay Rave Environmental Systems for service call on October twenty-seventh for no heated renewed life haven for four hundred and forty dollars. This will be paid by Human Services.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Asking approval to pay Bob Catavieri for the rubber snow blade to be used on the parking deck for five hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Approval to pay to Sanus for ice melt rock salt for the parking lots for one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Asking approval to pay Gil Day Group for work done on the A D, A ramp at the front of the courthouse. Application four for nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents, and application five for thirteen thousand, seven forty-seven, fifty.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Asking approval to pay Brian Noah Project Manager for work done on eleven-one to eleven-thirty for two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Asking approval to pay Culligan Water Conditioning. This is for installation of a new water softener at the courthouse for seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Asking approval to pay Foreman Building Commissioning. This is for commissioning work on the H VAC project here at the courthouse. Invoice number three for four thousand dollars. Invoice number four for six thousand dollars.
Make the motion.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Asking approval to pay Microback Labs. This is for the lead testing at the courthouse for one hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Asking approval to pay Star Image Products. This is for printing of copies for the H VAC project for eighty-six dollars and ten cents.
Make the motion.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Apologize. I could have bundled that with this next one. Approval to pay PALS portable toilets for the H VAC project for a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Stands on its own, Mark. It's okay.
I should have. Got done in queue.
Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Aye.
Henry.
Approval to pay.
Go ahead.
See if you're awake.
Nope. Don't change to his side.
I think I'm on O. Approval to pay Perry Construction. Application number seven for work done on the H VAC project at the courthouse for four hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Asking to ratify approval to pay some about rentals, rentals. This is to rent a compressor, winterized water lines, and fairgrounds for five hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-two cents.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Approval to pay PALS sanitation and construction. This is to snake out and replace a plugged drain line in the courthouse for two thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Lastly, approval to pay United Contractors for work done on the courthouse window project. Application number four for twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Thanks. Thank you. Human services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm seeking ratification of the contract with Linstar Incorporated. This agreement covers preventative maintenance and on-call remedial maintenance service for all the door security equipment that we have installed from them. The attached agreement was prorated for fourteen point five months so that it will run on a calendar year like the courthouse's Linscore contract.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Seeking approval of the Ohmsoss attestation form stating acknowledgement that Mary Kea, Pennsylvania has successfully completed the C C R I process required for them to enroll as an in-county family-based mental health provider.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry. Yes.
Seeking to ratify payments to the Center for Family Services for the delivery of E-RAP two services through eleven-twenty-one totaling a hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and seven cents with no cost to county, all paid with E-RAP two funds.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Seeking approval of the contract with Testolora Intermediate Unit. This is T I U's contract to us, as they will be reimbursing us a maximum of four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents for costs incurred in retention and recruitment of the E I direct care staff through a workforce development grant. We intend to utilize these funds to purchase tablets for our E I staff. There is no county match on these federal funds.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Seeking approval of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three S O C contract with Stanley Murawski. The contract is for ongoing consulting services for S O C development and assistance in writing and development of the Ohmsoss crisis grant application.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Seeking approval of the F one amendment to the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three C Y S J P contract with Justice Works Youth Care. This amendment is adding two services to the contract.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Seeking approval of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three professional contract with Crawford Central School District. This funding helps to support the school-based prevention specialist position.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
And finally, I'm seeking approval of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three C one amendment, professional contract with Parkside. Parkside will be providing a trauma training to our staff, which will be funded by associate.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Finance.
Good morning. For your approval, I have invoices totaling one thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents. These were detailed in last week's work session.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
And for your ratification, I have invoices totaling seven hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. These were also detailed in last week's work session.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
And finally, for your approval, I have a contract with Tyler Technologies. It's a contract amendment for the annual S A A S charge in the amount of four thousand, two hundred dollars. This is our new Mina software that we're going to, it was a piece that they inadvertently omitted from the original contract.
Make the motion.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay. The Crawford County Fair Board, Commissioner Wiederspin acting on behalf of them.
First up is the approval of the sponsorship agreement with Toyota for twenty-five hundred dollars. This is for vehicle displays and concerts and main events during the fair week. This is for three-year contract beginning when next year's fair.
Are you making that motion, Francis?
I'll let you.
Oh, then I'll.
So move. I will second that.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Okay. Next one, I'll make this motion to approval of the contract between the Crawford County Fair Board and Ole Miss Marketing. This had been approved already by the fair board. That was the previous one. I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
And the last one is to approve the contract between the Crawford County Fair Board and Zambellis for the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four fair. Two thousand and twenty-three is a fifty percent discount because of the not having fireworks last year at the fair, and that'll be at four thousand dollars. And then they're also giving a twenty-five percent discount on the two thousand and twenty-four fair for what the price would have been. So the price of the discount will be nine thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Probably with a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Francis.
Sure thing.
Commissioners.
Would you like me to do a clerk?
Yeah, I did. I just got a hold of Patty. She had an appointment, so I'll do whatever. Thank you.
Clerk of Courts is requesting ratification of the cordoned payment for this office solicitor, Christopher Ferry, in the amount of one thousand dollars. It isn't approved, alleged, and.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry. Yes.
And the now, this mistress office, we're requesting to approve the courthouse closing at noon on December twenty-third, is a Friday, for the Christmas holiday.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Thank you. New hires and transfers?
I'll make the motion to approve the new hires and transfers.
I, my, my folder of my desk, I'm just gonna go, you guys have, if you don't have one.
My yours. Mine's over the wall.
Oh, there you go. We both have. Do we have any transfers of new hires?
They're, they're on the counter. Somebody wants to grab them if you guys want one, but they're normally in your. They're normally in your folder.
But I know we have a lot of other things to discuss in salary board, so I think it's just a matter of.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the, uh, for prospering of hires and employee transfer with details. In our package. I will second that.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Saug.
Aye.
Wiederspin.
Yes.
Okay. Just for updates, the next session will be December twenty-first. The courthouse will be closed the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh for the Christmas holiday, and then the full session will be on December twenty-eighth. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Saug.
Uh, I actually have nothing today. Thank you.
Commissioner Wiederspin.
I'd just like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. Look forward to finishing up the year.
I would echo those. That's great. Any other business for the commission report? Mission for Germany?
So move.
We are good. Thank you.